Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Tuesday, May 27, 2025 at 5:33 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
All right, Mr. Smoot, you're going to read the closed session items?
Yeah, the council will reassess the closed session for one item, item 3A listed on the agenda, Conference of Real Property Negotiator.
Any recusals or conflicts? Any public comments? Anybody? Peter, you want to talk on anything tonight? I guess not. All right, we'll reassess the closed session. All right, let's get started here. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the city council here in Bellflower to order Tuesday, May 27, 2025 at 7:00. We're reconvening for open session, and there was no reportable action in our closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
All right, I'm going to have the invocation led by Councilmember Wendy Morris and the pledge allegiance by Brian McNerney, the Director of Public Safety, so please rise.
Lord, as we come together this evening as a city, I want to express my gratitude and remembrance for those who died while serving our country. I ask for wisdom and grace for our city staff, my fellow councilmembers, and myself, as we work together to serve the best interests of our community. I thank you for this day, in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do a council announcements. I'll start. The Bellflower Leadership Experience and Development Lead Program offers local teens a unique opportunity to engage their community while building essential life and leadership skills. This summer, LEED will host an eight-week session designed to help students in graduating classes of 2026 through 2029 and prepare for the life after high school. Meeting once a week, participants will explore topics such as interview techniques, team-building exercises, and general job readiness. LEED provides a supportive environment where students can build confidence and develop tools to help them succeed beyond high school. Applications for the summer session are open from May 1 through June 6. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2331, or contact mhardy@bellflower.california.gov. Mayor Protem Santinas?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Bellflower Volunteer Center is partnering with local community groups, schools, service clubs, churches, and residents to collect backpacks and school supplies for students in need across Bellflower. You can help make a difference by donating new backpacks or any new school supplies. Your contribution ensures students have the tools they need to succeed while easing the financial burden on families and teachers. Donations can be dropped off at the Bellflower Volunteer Center, located at 16614 Clark Avenue, by Monday, July 7. For more information, please contact the Bellflower Volunteer Center at 562-804-1424, extension 2331. That's all I, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santinas. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bellflower Certified Farmer's Market at Town Center Plaza, located at 16521 Aiden Moore Avenue, operates from 3:00 to 7:00 PM every Monday. They were operating yesterday, I saw them out there, excluding certain holidays, but not yesterday. Choppers can enjoy a wide selection of fresh produce, bread, food vendors, and handcrafted specialty items. Please come support your local farmers and artisans. For more details, call 562-804-1424, extension 213. In fact, I was there a week ago Monday, and I bought this beautiful jar of pure honey, and I put it in the car and promptly dropped it, and now I'm trying to get the honey out of my car, but that's another story. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Clifton and Breckenstock Library, located at 9945 Flower Street, invites community members of all ages to join for their in-person programs this June. These events are free, open to the public, and offer great opportunities to learn, connect, and experience all that the library has to offer. We encourage everyone to come explore, engage, and take full advantage of these community resources. To view the full calendar of events and register, please visit visit.lacountylibrary.org/events. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. In partnership with the City of Bellflower and the Southeast Area Animal Control Authority, CIACA, Vet Care will host Affordable Pet Vaccine Clinics at Thompson Park, located at 1400 Bellflower Boulevard, from 8:00 to 10:30 AM on Sunday, June 15, and Sunday, July 13. Services include $12 rabies vaccinations, microchipping, and wellness exams. All pet owners are welcome. For more information, please visit vetcarepetclinics.com or call 800-988-8387. Again, 1-800-988-8387. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. All right, public comments. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience wishing to come forward and speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight? Come on up. There's a sign-in sheet up there. Sign in and state your name in the microphone for the clerk's record, please, and then...
Good evening. Thank you for the time to come and to speak really briefly. My name is Rhiannon Lucero, and I attend Victory Outreach here in Bellflower. And my pastor's been here before, and you may have, or you may remember him, but we're having a special event coming up. It's, we call it Code Red. We're part of an international church, and throughout the entire organization, we're going to be simultaneously doing this Code Red effort. And it originally started off spearheading to reach women of the night, prostitutes, really get into that, that, that community, and bring them in and let them know about Jesus and the love of Christ, and that there is hope for their lives. And we have women's homes. I'm the director of the women's home for the Victory Outreach Bellflower Church. Our house is located in Watts, so we travel over here, you know, for every service and for all the events here. But, so, on the June 5th, 6th, and 7th, those are the three days that we've set aside for Code Red. And, you know, Bellflower doesn't have, you know, a huge community that fits that, you know. Thankfully, it's a beautiful, beautiful city. But we don't keep it just, you know, so narrow just for that community anymore. It's really grown. Anyone in need, we're going out into any kind of hurting areas in the cities. And so since our city is Bellflower, you know, we're here just letting you know that we are going to be out there reaching. We're passing out flyers. We're passing out, we're, we really are targeting the women. We're going to, we have special backpacks we've put together with toiletries and all kinds of great necessities. And also going to let them know, give them flyers for the women's home. I have about another six beds available left. I could take them in tonight if they wanted to. And just let them know that there's hope, and there's an answer, that we believe it works. We've seen it work. And so on the 7th, it's a Saturday, right here at Victory Outreach Bellflower, we're going to have, from 12 to 2, we're going to have a couple of hairstylists. We're still trying to find more, so if you know of anyone, please share them with us. And so we have two hairstylists coming in, and any women in the community that we see and we reach, and they want to come in and get a haircut, they can come in. We're going to have some of the ladies, they're not professional manicurists, but they're going to be washing their hands and doing little manicures for them, light makeup, hairstyles, just make them feel good about themselves. And it can, as, as all of us women know, what, what something like that can do for just how we feel inside. And so we just want to bring hope and want to bring a smile to their face on that day. We want to get the word out to you all, and just let you know that we're doing something here in the community, and we have your back in this avenue, and anything you can offer us, we're open to it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
You bet. Anyone else wishing to come forward and talk on something? Welcome.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers? I just want to share with the city of Bellflower. My name's Oscar. I'm the manager at the Breckenstock Library. Is it on? It's on. Thank you. I wanted to share information on our summer reading program, which we now call our Summer Discovery Program, because we want, as Councilmember Morse mentioned, we have many programs that we'll have throughout the summer. We have, our, our program is going to run from June 2nd all the way through August 10th, and it's for all ages. They can sign up online at lacountylibrary.org, or they can come in, the kids can come in and get a game card, and read three books, attend three programs or do three activities, or read six books, and they can collect prizes. So for the next two months, our Summer Discovery Program will be going on. And I also want to share about our Summer Star Studying Program. We had it last summer, and we just finished the spring session, so we're bringing it back one more time for this summer. The reading portion starts June 17, and it'll go until July 10, and it's for kids just finishing first through sixth grade, any of those grades, so first, second, third, if they're, they'll be eligible. For more information, they can, parents can come to the library, or they can also visit us at lacountylibrary.org to sign up online. Once, once the child is registered, it would be Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, so it'll be three days for the four months, for the four weeks for reading. And then our summer session starts July 15, and it'll go through August 7. So they can sign up for both, or they can sign up for one or the other. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Oscar. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Come on up. Welcome.
My name is JD Disan. I have been a resident here in the city of Bellflower since the 1990s, and happy that you have built the new Butterfly Garden Park in 2022 on 10525 Tribuco Street, which included Native American plants such as yarrow and compak white sage. Knowing that the Butterfly Garden Park was made possible partially funded by the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund and administered by the National Parks Service, U.S. Department of the Interior funding. Also, this leads me to believe that my ask is for our city council members. Thank you, Mayor and Mayor Protem, and thanks in advance for listening to my inquiry in how we can build our own community garden here in the city of Bellflower. Most of you know Lakewood has their own community garden located on Candlewood Street between Woodruff Avenue and Palos Verdes Avenue. And so does our large neighboring city here in Long Beach, which is located Eldorado East Regional Park. And other neighboring cities, which I didn't know they had one, Santa Fe Springs Community Garden, 10145 Pioneer Boulevard. Therefore, I started the Bellflower Garden Club August 2024, not only as a social club that helps understand their need for a better food system and understanding of food sovereignty, and also learning to grow food in smaller places. I have utilized my own residential backyard, which I'm grateful to have, to do research experimentation lab, note that is vital and a viable idea on a grand scale, and also connect with the farmer's market on Mondays. So once a week, I mean, once a month, which I do have a booth there to share who wants to have a community garden, and so far have collectively reached new families, as they too would prefer to stay here in Bellflower versus going to Long Beach or Lakewood to grow food. And they do have smaller spaces in their condos, and so they don't really have the room to grow any vegetables. And if they do, it's really not a whole lot they have space for. I also have seen three to four open spots in our city that can benefit in having a community garden, but I know the planning of this major, important, crucial plan is going to take time. Thanks again for hearing my ask, and hope to hear from anyone in your council or department on what I or we, the community, can do to guide us in the right path to planning a community garden if it is granted or a space is allotted in the near future. And I'm hopeful sooner, so we can be a forward-thinking city, which we have been since an arts district is also in consideration. And again, thank you again for hearing me tonight.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Not seeing any more. We'll... Okay, item 11A. Mr. Smoot, you want to read that in the record? Mr. Smoot?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Consideration of Possible Action to Adopt a Resolution 2521, a resolution approving substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan to Reprogram Remaining Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Relief Funds and Authorizing the City Manager to Reprogram Unused CDBG CV for the redesign of the public sidewalk area located at Friendship Square to Encourage Social Distancing. This is continued from your May 12 meeting.
I'm sorry, I have a conflict, Mayor, on 11A, for property interests within 500 feet.
All right. And I also have a property conflict within 500 feet of that location, too. So I'm going to recuse myself, along with Wendy, and for the record, and turn it over to Mayor Protem Santinas.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Morse. Let the record reflect that we'll be, we'll be running on three cylinders for this item. All right. All right, Mr. Smoot, or Mr. Delonge?
Mr. Delonge.
All right, Mr. Delonge. Please proceed.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Protem and remaining members of the city council. This is, again, a continuation for last couple of meetings in which we've come to you for direction on how to reallocate these funds. The funds are approximately $407,000, and direction was given at the last council meeting for staff to program those to redesign the Friendship Plaza area and the fountain area for social distancing. And what we've done tonight is provided an updated resolution and substantial amendment to reflect the direction that was given to staff by city council. So the recommendation today would be to reopen the continued public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number 2521, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And that concludes my quick and tidy presentation.
That was really quick. Just a general question, Mr. Delonge. Do you have some kind of concepts in terms of what we're trying to do for this location? Any ideas? Just ideas? It may be conceptual.
We really don't. We're going to actually work with a designer to come up with some of those concepts. We'll bring two or three of those back to you for consideration at a later date. Sooner the better, because we do have a time limit on the expenditure of these funds.
Or how about any kind of... What would you like to see?
Well, I think, and the Public Works Director can jump in anytime now, but we're looking at getting rid of the fountain area
Okay.
to expand the public seating area and just public gathering area, and we're going to try and have the designer, we're actually going to have the designer make that socially distant. So benches and stuff that will be separated by the six-feet social distancing requirements that are, that have been typically promulgated through the COVID times, and then we'll, we'll have other amenities there as well, and sanitizing stations, possibly drinking fountains, but we'll have typical public plaza hardscape amenities in that area.
Okay, so basically for sitting?
Sitting and gathering.
Gathering, okay, okay. All right, any question of Mr. Delonge? Councilmember Coops?
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we allocate some money to rehabilitate the Pirate Park, which is adjacent to this project?
I don't know if that was in the budget, but it wasn't part of this.
No, this is a separate entity.
Correct, yes.
So, does any, you remember, didn't we have some discussion on what we're going to do with Pirate Park? Because I think that the gathering part lends itself to the children playing in the, in the park there.
It's definitely a compliment.
PJ's coming.
PJ's to the rescue.
There is, in the proposed budget, there is some funding for rehabilitation of Pirate Park.
Right.
And that, that is in the CIP budget plan and, and budget coming up.
So this is, what I'm trying to say is, this is a project that could pull together both facets.
Yeah, they would be two separate projects, but yes, they will work together and make it aesthetically working together, yes.
Because I believe the Pirate Park could use a little upgrade or rehabilitation
Yeah.
as does our potential vote here. But, thank you, PJ.
Okay. Councilmember Sanchez?
Just to, thank you, Mayor Protem. Just to piggyback off of Councilmember Coops's comments, so correct me if I'm mistaken, Mr. Milano, you will be partaking in the applying and process as well, so that we ensure that there is a bit of cohesive effort from multiple departments?
Jump in on this real quick. Because of the, Councilmember Sanchez, because of the timeframe that we have to work with, with the CDBG funds, these projects will not happen concurrently at the same time. We, we have to focus on the social distancing component of this first. But once we have that area designed out, as we move forward with future concepts for changes or rehabilitation of the Pirate Park, it'll be tied into...
Right. I, I don't mean, to be clear, I don't mean both Pirate Park and this specific area. I mean, the departments themselves, you know, Parks and Rec is the fund department, so I want to make sure, I want to make sure that they're included in this project.
PJ dreams it, and I build it.
That's what I want to hear.
And then we wreck it, so. And, and yes, and we'll provide our master plan as well, which has a lot of different samples that we can inspire the designers.
That's where I'm getting to, that there is a bit of, while both projects won't happen at the same time, that there is still a big picture.
It will definitely be a team effort.
Thank you.
Between all of us, yes.
Okay, any other question? No, it's our motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to reopen the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. Anyone who would like to speak on this very exciting item on the agenda? Oh, Sheriff, you made it. Okay.
Anyone work in that area?
No?
Anyone with kids?
Apparently not.
All right.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. All right, gentlemen, what's the pleasure?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I will make a motion to approve Resolution approving, Resolution Number 24, 25-21, a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan to Reprogram Remaining Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Relief Funds and Authorize the City Manager to Reprogram Unused CDBG Funding-CV for the redesign of the public sidewalk area located at Friendship Square to encourage, encourage social distancing.
Second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Councilmember Coops, to adopt Resolution Number 25-21. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye. Motion carried. All right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that Mayor Dutton and Councilmember Morse are rejoining the council meeting. Thank you, Mayor. That was quick.
Maybe we should have gave you this like two meetings ago.
Three meetings to get that one done.
I leave the room and it got done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to announce the reason why we're dressed more casually, is the mayor has dictated a mandate that says after Memorial Day and up until Labor Day in September, we need not wear a coat and tie. Well, I'm just telling what the mayor said.
To be decided sometime after Labor Day.
So in case you question what happened to our coat and ties, they're not the cleaners.
They're retired until the cooler weather comes back.
And staff is exercising that same possibility. Lip fluffs, and yeah.
I thought we excluded the same manager.
Anyway, I just thought to bring those that view these things, wonder what happened to, who are these guys, you know, and ladies?
All right, Mr. Smoot, item 11B for the record.
11B, Mr. Mayor, is Consideration of Possible Action to Adopt Resolution Number 2518, a resolution to record and notice a special assessment for nuisance abatement for the property located at 17046 Bellflower Boulevard. And I believe our Assistant City Attorney is here for this one as well. Tim?
Mr. Mayor and honorable councilmembers, good evening. I am here to present on Resolution Number 25-18 regarding the recording of a nuisance abatement lien to be collected by special assessment with, for commercial property located at 17046 Bellflower Boulevard. Briefly, and by way of background, this was a, some time ago, as you all know, a bank, but has been vacant for many years. In the course of its being vacant and undeveloped, while the parking lot would commonly be used by the community, the property itself fell into disrepair and blight, as you can see in these pictures. Most notably, you can see one of the front main pane windows broken out, allowing free access to the structure itself. And as you all know, based on many years of such experience, when vacant buildings get accessed like this, and when it starts to rain, or when it gets hot and people are seeking shelter, oftentimes individuals will do things like light fires inside such structures in order to cook food, stay warm, and so forth, which results in structure fires in places the community and neighboring properties at grave risk. This has actually happened in other properties in the city, and so we take this very, very seriously. Code enforcement began its action of trying to get control of this property going back to 2022 with formal notices. By July of 2023, the property had amassed already $5,000 in administrative citation fines without action being taken. City Attorney's Office got involved in December of 2023 and continued to attempt to gain voluntary compliance and bring in the property into community standards, which this obviously is not. Despite representations by the managing partner of the owning LLC known as Euclid Hazard Capital LLC, the managing partner, Josh Golchay, made representations of... partner, Josh Golchay, made representations of addressing these issues repeatedly, sometimes responding, sometimes not. As a result of continuing attempts to gain voluntary compliance, including executing a warrant just to clean up the property of things like overgrown vegetation, a lot of dumping of trash and debris was happening, cover up graffiti, and try to secure the property. And we did that in April of last year. We went to record that lien in August of 2024, when Mr. Golchay's attorney on behalf of the owner, the LLC, asked for a sixty-day extension for time to pay the approximately $11,000 in abatement costs for that initial abatement. We honored that, but also said we need a game plan for bringing this property into compliance with very detailed description of the violations and required corrective actions. Remarkably detailed, really. Received no response. We honored our end of the sixty day to pay. It wasn't paid, and we recorded the lien in November of last year. Also about that time, which I'll get into a little more detail in just a moment as far as notice goes, but we did provide multiple additional notices that more work had to be done, and the city intended to demolish the structure if action was not taken to bring the property into compliance, both as a blight under Chapter eight point three six of the municipal code and under the city's vacant lot ordinance. Because this is, while it does have a structure on it, it is not a occupied structure which falls under Chapter eight point four oh of the BMC. We undertook abatement of the property, and as you can tell, and as you all are very much aware, it is an incredible improvement of what was done, of what was previously at this location. No more do we have blight, attractive nuisance, and the very real risk to the community and neighboring properties. And now we have something that is at, is at least aesthetically somewhat pleasing to the eye, certainly in comparison, and hopefully inspires us, either the current owner or someone, to develop this property into something that the city can be proud of. The costs can be broken down as follows, and this is all detailed, of course, in the resolution exhibit itself. But as you can see, the majority of the costs went to the actual demolition itself. This is a combination of the actual demolition and certain remediation that had to happen due to toxic materials that are in old buildings that have to be taken out before the structure can be demolished to avoid those toxic substances becoming airborne and affecting the community. It took a little bit of time to get all this together, partly because of the remediation that had to be done before we could actually demolish the structure, but we were able to do so, and the results are quite obvious. While there have been many, many notices to the property owner regarding the condition of the property and the need to bring it into compliance with the BMC, I have for you here particular notices that are specific to demolition of the property, and noticing of demolition of the property and what needs to be done in order to avoid the city taking direct abatement action beyond what it did last April. I would like to note that each of these notices were sent via regular US mail. Several were sent certified mail to the registered address for the Agent of Service Process and to Mr. Golchay, and email to Mr. Golchay, using email where we've exchanged communication. So this is a good email. We know it's a good email. And, and so I bring this up to make it very clear that we provided Mr. Golchay with every opportunity over the course of really several years to bring this property into compliance and to act. And it was, it was only as a last resort that we actually went in to do what you see in the photographs there. On May second of this year, a formal demand and notice of these costs was sent to Mr. Golchay, and we did receive a response. In fact, prior, prior to, just prior to the actual demolition of the, of the building, received correspondence from Mr. Golchay claiming that he didn't know that any of this was happening and didn't know that he needed to do any things, or that the city was looking to demolish the property if it was not brought into compliance. These were directed to the City Attorney's Office, which we flatly deny, contest categorically. And Mr. Golchay asked for an opportunity to walk the property so we could point out all the things that needed to be done. Instead, we referred him back to the notices we sent out that were extremely detailed as to the nature of the violations and what corrective actions needed to be taken in order to prevent the city from engaging in direct abatement of the property. Unfortunately, no, no action was taken, and the city proceeded with demolition in the amount of approximately $212,000, which is the listed in the resolution is what we're requesting that the city council authorize recording a lien for. It must be noted that, once counts, if the council approves recording of the lien, we still must serve notice of this and give Mr. Golchay, or the ownership, I should say, one last opportunity to satisfy the lien before we record it, and we will do that. The reason why there is some urgency to get this moving is because on April eighteen, a notice of loan default by the lender to Euclid Hazard Capital, the owner of the property, was recorded with the county indicating an outstanding balance of over $2.2 million from the mortgage lender. This was a ninety-day notice in order to cure, basically pay up $2.2 million as of April eighteen. At the conclusion of that ninety-day period, if that is not paid, then based on experience, the property then gets basically put up for foreclosure auction. That takes generally around four weeks, give or take, after the expiration of the ninety days. It can happen sooner. It just really sort of depends on the ability to give one more form of notice and when the next auction is scheduled. So generally speaking, it's anywhere between three to five weeks after that is when the auction is expected to occur. A city nuisance abatement lien is what's known as a super lien. It takes priority over the mortgage lender's lien, so that normally, when something is sold under a deed of trust foreclosure, all encumbrances are wiped out. And so whoever buys it at auction gets clean title. The exception is with government liens, and this is one of them. So this does not get extinguished. That said, unless we get this recorded in advance of it going to auction, we, the city risks not being able to attach those, that lien cost to the property. So that's why we are acting as we are now and seeking that authorization be provided, that we give Mr. Golchay his opportunity to cure and pay in full, and then we, and if not, we will record and make sure that the county is well aware of this lien, so that if and when it is sold at auction, that the city recover the full $212,000 being requested under the, under this nuisance abatement lien. And that concludes my presentation on the property. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Go right ahead, Mayor Protem.
Mr. Cam, thank you so much for your presentation. It's very, very detailed. Just for clarification, for the benefit of our listening public, can you confirm that we got a court order to demolish the building?
Yes. Prior to engaging in any kind of abatement by the city on private property, either we need consent by the owner or a warrant from the court. Both abatements conducted at this property, as are all abatements for every property in the city, were done pursuant to a duly authorized abatement warrant issued by this Los Angeles Superior Court Judge.
Okay, thank you. And then I understand from your description that time is of the essence in terms of recording the lien. How, if the council approves the resolution tonight, how soon can this be recorded? How soon can the lien be recorded?
Notice, notice of recording of the lien must be served, must be personally served, which we can do because it's an LLC with, with a, an agent for service of process. So we have to serve it as if we were serving a lawsuit, a summons and complaint.
Okay.
According to the government code.
So, within a matter of days?
So, we will, we will, we will do that as soon as the, the resolution is signed. We will attach that to the notice of recording, which is part of what gets recorded with the county. And so I expect that we will make every effort to have this personally served this week, provided that we have the documentation.
Okay, very good. And then part of your report states that we have a, there's a twenty, almost $12,000 lien that was previously sent to them. Has that been paid?
It has not, but it has been recorded.
It's been recorded. Okay. So this will be the second recording of a lien from the city?
Correct.
Okay. And then, in terms of the, the cost involved here, I just want to confirm that this is a fully loaded cost. Is that correct?
Yes. This, this includes all reimbursable costs under the government code and the BMC.
Okay. Let me just point a couple of things here to make sure that we got everything right here. Our city attorney only, only is charging, is charging only twenty-four minutes.
Very quick.
Yeah, point four hours. Is that correct? I mean, I, I wanna make sure that...
The accounting should show a far more detailed accounting, adding up to, and again, we, we already charged other costs in the first abatement lien, but this, these attorney costs totaled $23,077.
No, our own city attorney, Carl Berger, only charged twenty-four minutes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my team is very efficient, so I, it doesn't require a whole lot of oversight on my behalf, and we do try to keep costs down, even if they're being leaned against the property, so.
Oh, okay.
That sounds accurate to me.
We've more, more time than that in our discussions. I wanna make sure that it's being charged appropriately. And then for code enforcement, only Mr. Brian McNerney is charging time. Is that, is that accurate?
Mr. McNerney is here, and he can address that, but I can say that...
How about other code enforcement staff?
This would be an accounting since the last abatement. So this would have been since April of 2024, because we had, we collected those costs leading up to that point, at that time. So this would be since April of 2024, when we, when we assembled the costs up to that point.
I see. Can, can you confirm that, Mr. McNerney?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, to answer that question, yes. So since April, this is last lien, it was applied April of twenty-four, I believe, my time was the only one from code enforcement involved in this actual case with this property.
So the case was elevated to your level, and you're the one, the only one charging?
At the time, I was still the manager, so it was dumped sort of on my plate, and I just carried with it throughout the entirety of the case till it finally reached a completion.
And, and how about, I'm, I'm nitpicking here, okay? How about our city manager? I didn't, I didn't see, well, I'm an accountant by profession. Okay, I wanna make sure that... All right, city manager, how come you didn't charge any of your time here?
There is none of my time here. That is correct.
None of your time?
Yeah.
But you spent time on this.
I would argue I didn't spend it directly, but I did sit in meetings with you all discussing the project, for sure.
But that would have been chargeable, though.
Suppose one can make that argument?
Okay. I wanna make sure we're pretty much covered here. How about finance and accounting?
I'll fully admit, I'm not entirely sure if their time is, is reimbursable through, if not the direct enforcement, related action that the City Attorney's Office, Public Works, and myself were providing.
Okay, not administration?
I don't believe that's gonna be attributable to the actual costs associated with reimbursable costs.
Well, I wanna make sure that we recover the full cost, because it's, it's the people's money. If it's not, if, the time is being spent for this enforcement, and then we're spending time, and it's being paid for general fund or some other sources, it's not fair to our taxpayers. That's the bottom line. So I wanna make sure that the owner of this property is fully charged with the full cost of what it took them to, what took the city to basically enforce our, our notices. That's the bottom line. Okay, so.
Mayor Protem, the BMC allows for collection of costs effectively directly related to the abatement, including the cost of collecting.
There you go.
The funds.
So that's indirect cost.
And so, and so I believe there is a, certainly, at the very least, a defensible argument to be made for what you are advocating.
Because in order to collect, you have to bill first.
Absolutely.
There you go.
And it takes time to collect itself. And, and I will admit that the collection costs aren't all captured here, because there comes a point where you have to give notice, and then you're gonna spend time after that, and so forth. So there's always gonna be perhaps some loss there. But I believe that you could authorize adding to the amount shown here of $2,012, $2,000, I'm sorry, $212,161.61, and include reasonable costs since that demand went out on May second, towards collection to be added to the total cost to be recorded. I believe, I believe we, we can do that, and it is inherently part of collecting all the funds owed that you would never be able to capture if you had to keep coming back to council to get an exact number authorized. So I, I believe we can add that.
I'd rather do that as long as it will not delay the recording of this lien, because that, to me, recording the lien is more important, because we can always, I'm sure that we can always record another lien at a later date, if it, if it's warranted based on the amount. But if it's an option to do that, I'd rather take that option.
I did note, Mayor Protem, that we do have hours for Public Works Manager and our Assistant City Manager up here at the top of page nine.
No, I'm asking about the city manager.
Oh, okay. I was just saying, we, I noticed we had hours in there for them.
Yeah, I, I saw that, too.
Yeah.
But it's my...
The, the direct city manager.
The real city manager, the fire chief.
Generally, as far, as far as most of our administrative staff go, we don't track our time on a, you know, six-minute basis as a city attorney or any other attorney might do. We don't really track our time cards that way. So it becomes a little more difficult for us to do that for general administrative type work. There are situations where we do it, for example, if we have a reimbursement agreement with a particular project, and, you know, we work an hour in a week, we'll put that on our time card and track it to that. But it does require some administrative burden as well, because our finance team then has to go create that account, and we have to charge for that account, and it adds to the time cards, and so on, and so on, and so on. So there is some administrative burden associated with that. But if the council wants to establish that, keep in mind, we are going through a process to update our, I'll say antiquated time card process. We still use paper time cards. That makes that even more difficult. As we update that stuff, if that's something the council wants to start doing, we can look into that if that's something.
But, but if you feel that it's kind of significant, you can always go back.
I think no matter what we do, there's always gonna be a little bit of, you know, give and take in that. But certainly, if you want us to take a more detailed look at that, we can do that.
I may only consider if it's, if you're spending a significant amount of time, then I'd rather those time be charged. But it's only very, very minute, then I don't really care.
And I think, I think if it came to a point where, for example, if I felt like this was something that I needed to keep the city manager's office on top of on a regular basis, for the most part, I trust my department has to do those things. But if there are particular projects where we do that, and I might have to say, have Seewong Su involved in regular meetings, of course, we would go and track that time into that. But in these things where it's general oversight of a particular project, you know, we leave the department to manage those projects. In this case, Brian happened to have been the manager. He carried this project through, so we had some consistency. That's why you see he is in there.
Well, I just wanna leave it at this. If you feel, finance feels that it is significant amount of time, I'd rather make the adjustment. But if it's not, then let it, let it be. Because the main goal is to record the lien as soon as possible.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. We definitely can add the time and document it on, you know, future time cards and make a note that on such and such... future time cards and make a note that on such and such date, um, like, I personally spent an hour, um, looking at the list of things that are included in the resolution. There's only two invoices, so finances involvement is very little. The city attorney invoices are, it's, it's longer, the list that they're including, but we're not processing a whole lot of invoices either in terms of city attorney cost, that's why, um, it's not tracked. So it's, it's minimal.
So at the bottom line, it's not significant?
It's not significant. But if there is significant cost that is admitted, and if, um, city attorney's office is saying that we can include it, we can definitely make the adjustment on future time cards, and then if we can amend the resolution, we can certainly do that.
I will caveat that with this. All of the rates that you see in here are fully burdened hourly rates. That accounts for all of our overhead, all of our, you know, technology, internet, all of the additional uses that our employees would have to have, but it accounts for all of that, included in these fully burdened hourly rates for each form of our employees.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Coops.
Mr. Attorney, so the, uh, where does the lender on this property, how much are they, do they know of the property currently?
Well, I, I, I couldn't say. Um, it, it would appear that the lender is aware of our first lien, because that's why we got the notice. It was, it, it arrived at the clerk's office. So, um, these, these 90-day notices have to go out to every single party that has a recorded, um, interest in the property, to put them on notice that, for most people, that their, uh, their, their lien might get wiped out by virtue of this action. So they have to protect their interest however they can. Um, the city, of course, is in a different position, as I mentioned.
Can you put back up the list of, uh, how much we're paying for different, there you go. So Len, here's my question to you. California Landscape and Design, $60,000. Wood chips and that fence, is that 60 grand, or am I missing something?
No, that, that, that was the cost for that component that we, uh, we put in there. And that's a direct invoice from, from the contractor.
I'm just checking, it seemed a bit steep. Now, I'm arguing like against Sonny here, he wants more, and I'm trying to figure out a deal. But, but I just wanted to confer with you that that's a lot of wood chips.
Councilmember Coops, um, and, and, um, public works director could, could probably give you a little more detail, but in addition to that, and I, I don't know if California Landscape did it, or if Integrated Demolition and Remediation did it, but there, where the fencing goes, basically a trench is dug in the perimeter of the property to get down to earth, so the posts can be placed, but it also serves the purpose of, for water runoff, it goes into that trench to then percolate into the ground rather than runoff into the sidewalk and public, um, right-of-way.
Okay, so it's more infrastructure than it is seen?
Yes.
Correct. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Go ahead, Vickor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Yes, we are. We're going to open a public hearing, and then you can speak. Okay, that's what he's doing, okay. Got a motion on the floor to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion on the floor, Sanchez, second, Sandy Santinez, uh, without objection, that'll be the order. Public he, hearing is opened. Sir, come on up. Just sign in, please, at the clipboard there and, and state your name and.
Okay, I took some notes on my phone. Does it bother the council if I?
No, no, you can use your phone, yes. No problem. And what is your name?
Sorry. Uh, my name is Josh Golda. I very much appreciate this opportunity on behalf of Uqurt Hazard Capital LLC. Uh, I'm the managing member of the entity. I think it was mentioned managing partner, but I technically go by managing member. Uh, I very much.
You a managing member or a property owner?
Managing member.
Okay, got it.
I mean, technically.
Same thing, okay.
I'm the managing member.
Okay.
You know, practically speaking, uh, you know, I, I don't know in layman's terms what it is, but I'm just giving you guys the technical term of it.
Okay.
Uh, I very much appreciate this opportunity, come speak in front of council, because I do have some comments that I'd like to make. You know, while I appreciate what the city attorney has mentioned, um, I have a very different understanding of the sequence of events. So, uh, first of all,
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry for interrupting. Perhaps we should put the witness under oath for this one.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, would you like to administer the oath? Anybody else wishing to speak in the audience, we can do it all at once. Even if you think you might not speak, but you might speak, then we don't have to stop the proceeding to get that. Okay, go ahead. Not seeing anybody else.
Do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in the matter pending before the city council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so, uh, first things first, you know, I'd like to express that, you know, I'm a, uh, regular dude, I'll call it, and once again, in layman's terms. Uh, I'm not some big fancy, uh, corporation, um, and, you know, I'm not backed by, you know, ginormous people that, you know, come and these things are like traffic tickets to them. I started doing, uh, real estate when I was 18, really 17 years old. I used to lick stamps for a development company. And, uh, you know, I worked my way up to be able to, to purchase real estate. You know, when I first purchased a slot, I was really genuinely thinking that, uh, I, I'm hoping that I would be known, um, as a good quality developer for the city, and that my relationship with the city would only ever grow. My first deal that I ever pursued in the city of Bellflower, uh, was down the street. I believe it was an old, uh, Greek, uh, supermarket that I was, uh, in escrow to purchase, and I was trying to put Dollar Tree there at the time. You know, it, I, I think I was about 20 or 21 years old. And, uh, I didn't have the means and the capacity to be able to complete the deal. But I did remember the city, and I believe actually that I met with, uh, I believe it was with Mr. Coops, uh, way back when, about, uh, the corner of, uh, Bellflower and Artesia. And I believe with, uh, uh, Mr. Dave Gold, the late, Mr. Dave Gold, you had even set up a meeting for us to be able to, to coordinate with each other. And, uh, you know, I had only ever had, uh, good experiences, uh, with the city of Bellflower, and I felt that the city of Bellflower was, you know, a, an amazing place that I would be able to make investment, and that I would be able to grow with the city. Uh, I'm currently only 35 years old. I think I'm still relatively young, and that I have a lot, you know, my best years ahead of me, and that, you know, that one successful development would, you know, spiral into, into other great opportunities. It truly makes me sad and dismayed that this is the first opportunity that I'm, that I'm addressing the council in this way. I'd like to, to be, uh, noted that I've spent tens of thousands of dollars on maintaining the building. I have that via council checks, um, and I can bring my maintenance, uh, the maintenance individual that, uh, was handling it, Francisco Sumandel, I can bring him to testify for, for this as well. The, what was, you know, a, I think at a point in time where, uh, it started to get a little bit, uh, you know, quote unquote, out of hand, is when I was told that the broken windows can't be boarded, that the city doesn't allow for boarded windows when it's, something is, is broken. But if I have a homeless issue, and the homeless people keep just breaking a window, how long does it take to break a window? It takes 20 seconds. You just come with any metal piece of object, and you break it, and then you can come back in. The only way to keep them out of the building is to actually board it so that they can't get in. The rest of the building is brick, so obviously they can't get through there, but, you know, if, if your objective is to keep the homeless people out, the transient, I'm sorry, the transient people out, then the best method would be, uh, to board it up. I have, you know, email documentation saying that the boarding it up does not work for the city of Bellflower. You know, at that point, I don't really know what else to do. You know, we'd call the police to come, and the police wouldn't come and, uh, and remove the transient people. You know, it's, I, I think, uh, you know, anybody will come and tell you that for a vacant lot, that it's impossible in order to have a, uh, a full-time security guard or something like that, which, uh, you know, I don't know if it was, if I have it in writing, but that was also told to me as something that I should, uh, that I should do. You guys mentioned this foreclosure. You know, when you see this foreclosure date, and you see the date of the, the demolition of the building, it's pretty close in, with each other. The reason why the, the lender gave me the loan is because they securitized it based on the inherent value of having a building on the premises. That's how they get, that's what they use in order to give me the loan. So with the building not being there, all of a sudden puts my, uh, my loan in jeopardy, which now puts me in a place where, God forbid, I'm facing foreclosure if, as Mr. City Attorney said, I have 90 days to cure it. I don't believe that the city council and the overall city of Bellflower are bad people, despite what happened to me. I do think that overall, that the city of Bellflower is investor-friendly. But from what's happened to me, I think the message that's been given is that the city is not a place which is open to investment. I understand that the city has certain powers and rights. I understand that. But don't you think it's abuse to go and tear down my building if the whole problem is that people can get in and out of the building? Like, why wouldn't you just, I don't even know how it's possible, but why wouldn't you just put con, if you don't allow a boarding? And clearly, you understand and you agree with me that the glass wa, that the glass windows can easily be broken. I don't know, put concrete there or something, or come and tell me, yeah, okay, Josh, you're making a reasonable, uh, you're making a reasonable request. Or if you guys can't even come up with something else, that the only outcome is to demolish the building, then I think you guys are inherently showing that the task that was given to me was impossible. Mr. Mayor Protem, once again, nothing personal, but the fact that there's a $211,000 lien that they're trying to put against me, but all you're trying to do is tack on more fees, and more fees, and more fees. It's astounding to me that that's what you're going for in the situation. I don't think the city of Bellflower is an abusive place like a mafia that's just looking to continue to put people down. With every bit of fees that you're coming and tagging on me, makes it more and more and more impossible to be able to get out of the hole in order to develop the property. If you really want to see the property developed, why wouldn't you give me the tools and resources and the ability to be able to actually bring that development to fruition? Mr. City, uh, City Attorney said that I reached out to him. Now, I was never served one time with anything. Was it my email, josh@golda.com that he sent it to? Yes, 100%. I personally, I, I, obviously, I don't think the city cares about my personal life, but I have a lot of problems in my personal life. Are there emails that I see and I don't see? Yes, it is. Are there sometimes that I'm more responsive than others? Yes. And I'm very, very sorry if there's times that I'm less responsive than others. I really, really am. I did also put the city in touch with my maintenance team, and I told them, I said, please direct my maintenance manager to do as you wish. Now, I had first heard about this because the broker, the, the, this referring to the demolition of the building, because the broker that had sold me the property texted me on the eve of one of my holidays, mind you, Passover, and said that there is, uh, that he said, oh, Josh, I'm so hyped for you, I see trucks on the property, what are you building? I told him, I said, I'm not building anything. What are trucks doing there? I said, maybe there's trucks that are illegally parked over there. And he said, no, these are trucks, and the property is fenced off, and they're on the inside. I'm assuming you're starting construction. I said, I have no idea what you're talking about. He said he has a relationship with the mayor. He said, let me go reach out to the mayor. I said, great, no problem. Please do that, thank you very much. I said, okay, you know what? If the trucks are there, and the building is there, and everything is there, I don't know what's going on, but okay, let's try to figure it out. Once again, I do believe that city of Bellflower is not a, is not a bad entity, and they're not malicious. So I went, looked up the email, the email correspondence that I had previously with the city, with the city attorney, and I responded to them, and I said, listen, I was just notified about this. Please, don't demolish my building. Let's try to work it out. Now, I'm a regular, simple person. I don't have a, uh, fancy degree. I never went to a fancy college. I don't have a construction degree. I don't even have a real estate license. I'm a private, regular investor, struggling and working my butt off, I'm sorry, trying to be able to amass real estate, okay, to make a good life and a good future for myself and for my family. When I did this, and I said, let's do a walkthrough, because paper doesn't mean anything. Paper is nothing. Let's physically go there. Show me what you want me to do. Let me come with my team. I'm notified. I'm, I'm actively, actively engaging in conversation. The building is still there. Let's figure this out. I was told, no, this is the last correspondence we're having with you. We're not having any correspondence with you. Come with a plan. I don't understand what the plan is. Once again, I don't think you guys even understand what the plan would be if the only answer, the only thing would be to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to demolish the building. If that's the only plan, I don't understand, over an email, how am I supposed to do that? If I'm offering to come with my team in person, and I'm being told, no, you might have a timeline of correspondences of things that were sent to me, but you're inherently proving and showing that it would not have made a difference when I reached out to you, because this was the only intention in mind by the city attorney. Mr. Coops, from the, I believe, 15 years ago that I met you, and I realized what a man of integrity you are, I very much appreciate that you also have noticed that some of these line items do seem very, very, very high. I don't understand how tax, uh, the city's residents' tax dollars was a good use of it to be spent to demolish this building. And I don't think that just because there's real estate attached to it, and that you can put a lien on it, that all of a sudden, that anybody can come and say, no problem, we can be the big bad wolf. Let's say the cost was $1 million. And I don't have any rights in that. I don't have any objections in that. And if I did come, and let's just be practical for a second, not legal, that I'm before the demolition of the building, and I'm reaching out, we can't have a 30-day continuance to come and try to figure it out? And if you're telling me that you're worried about summertime shine and homeless people getting out of the, this, and, and that there would be a fire and all this stuff, first of all, I live in the city of LA. I was impacted by the fires over there. I'm very, 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 very much aware of the damages of the fires that can come. This is a brick building, was a brick building. You guys are all smart enough to know, a brick building does not have a fire, a, a fire risk to it. I don't know how something like broken windows and transients, and the lack of police coming and supporting me, can all of a sudden magnitude into something like this. I have retained an attorney to come and prosecute for my rights. The amount of my damages is almost $4 million. You guys have put in here all these costs for legal, and Mr. Mayor Protem, that you're so cautious about every single minute that has been sent, spent, and that you want to recollect it? How much would be spent in attorney's fees and going on a lawsuit about this? How much time would be wasted? Now, the city might also be aware that I have submitted an application on this location for affordable housing. I have a lot of financial, major, major, major financial constraints, and I'm going through it in my own personal life like you could not imagine, okay? In effort to be able to dig myself out of the hole financially, and at the same time, deliver an extremely quality product to the city. I've retained the, the services from KTGY, who's one of the largest architectural firms in America that fully understands affordable housing and is a, one, and also market rate housing. I don't want to come and bring, going back to the first thing that I said, I don't want to be a bad developer for the city. I want the city to look at me and say, wow, I really appreciate, we're so happy that Josh Golda decided to buy 1046 Bellflower Boulevard. I want that to be the view of the city. I think if you look at the renderings and the plans that we've submitted, it's a beautiful project that we intend to do. I don't want to get into a lawsuit with the city.
You just told us you were.
Mr. Mayor, if you guys are going to pursue me, I have to protect myself. I'm hoping that we don't have to.
You just told us you were going to sue us.
Mr. Mayor.
So I'm done. I'm not going to talk to you anymore, but you can, you, you feel free to talk to, to let us know anything you want.
First of all, my attorney had sent you guys an email saying that I'm allowed to speak tonight, so you're allowed to speak to me. So, you're allowed to speak to me. He's given you guys the authorization to speak to me.
If we don't want to, we don't. If, if we, if we're gonna litigate this, zip it up.
My intention is that we don't, but if you're telling me once-
Well, you just threatened us. I don't believe you now.
No, no, that's not true. I did not threaten. I think that-
Did you guys hear that?
Yes.
Did you hear that? Came out of your mouth.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I, please ask, if I'm saying something, I please ask you, let me finish my thought. If that's okay with you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. When I say that I have retained the services of an attorney, I have a very short timeframe in order to go and see what I need to do with my next steps, okay? I have gone through my damages and I've sat with him and expressed it to him, okay? We have not filed summons. We have not filed a claim with the city. So, we have not filed an actual lawsuit, okay? I have retained the services of an attorney to guide me. And if I do not come to a resolution with the city, then I don't have any other choice. That's not a threat.
All we're here tonight is, is this a public hearing tonight for your property to be able to approve this item here on, is lien on the property? That's what we're here for tonight. The building's gone. The judge said, take it down. We took it down. We used taxpayer dollars to take it down. And now, we're gonna protect our taxpayer dollars by putting a lien on the property. How long have you owned the property?
I think roughly since twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-two and a half. It's been vacant for like twenty years, that same lot. But we've been putting up with this for a long time. We live here every day. We go by that every day. It's been a problem.
Shall I take that as there's nothing to work with over here?
Yeah. Well, all we're here tonight is to do this, is for lien. It's what, what's on the agenda. And that's, is our business here tonight. But we're gonna listen. It's a public hearing. You're welcome to tell us anything you want.
I understand.
Okay.
Uh, if there's, uh, you know, once again, I don't really, you know, uh, I think I've expressed multiple times over here that, uh, I speak very much in layman's terms, okay? Um, I, so, once again, uh, uh, saying that, uh, I made a threat. No, I did not make any threats, uh, or at least to my, uh, my understanding of what a threat is, my understanding of what I said.
You said you were gonna, in so many words, to initiate litigation against the city of Bellflower and us.
If I can't get to a resolution.
But that, you didn't add that in the same thing, but still, you're already threatening.
I believe if I, I believe that I did, but also, at the same time, uh, I know that I've taken a lot of the council, uh, council's time. But in the amount of time that I've spoken, I, it's, you know, interesting to me that that's the only, uh, uh, only thing that I said that, you know, that you wanted to come and, and, you know, quote me on and, uh, say back to me. Um, I, you know, once-
Only because this is all recorded and I'm not gonna say anything. If we're gonna go to court, that's what we're gonna talk.
I hope that we don't and I hope that there's a way that we can resolve it.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know what else to say.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might make a suggestion, the, uh, the actions that have been taken, there's been a, a process the city has gone through. Um, issuing multiple notices to correct these violations. We've gone to court. A judge has determined the appropriate method of abating the nuisances on the property. We carried out those, that abatement order from the judge. Abated the nuisance on the property, got it into the condition. And the question before you this evening is the placement of the lien. If Mr. Goldschay wants to rectify the costs associated with the demolition and, and abating the nuisances, certainly, he can cut a check to the city to, uh, uh, abate those costs tomorrow. We'd be happy to accept that check and that rectifies the situation. He can move forward with however he'd like to move forward with the property and the lien doesn't get placed. If he'd like to do that, he's more than able to. Otherwise, we have the costs that the city has incurred to carry out the judge's order to abate the nuisances that existed on this property. My suggestion to you is, the recommendation from your assistant city attorney is to place this lien and recover those costs.
Anything else? Did you understand what he said? You can write it, you can come into City Hall and, and make this lien good or, or, you know, we'll record it. How long will it take to re, to get this recorded? A week or so?
By the time the notice goes out, you have to give ten days.
Okay, ten days.
And then, so, we're, we're probably looking at about two weeks, give or take, before we are authorized to record the lien, provided it is not satisfied before that time.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I mean, I, I have nothing more to say if, you know, I don't really understand the process. Um, you know, I don't understand if there's a, uh, you know, a method of trying to working things out. Um, but, you know, I was, uh, you know, hoping that in good faith that there was something to do, but, um, I, I don't have anything more to say.
The building's gone. We're not putting it back. Um, we went through a process to get the building gone. It's gone now. The last thing is protecting our taxpayers' money by putting a lien on the property. So, if you wanna take care of the lien before it gets recorded, you're welcome to do that. As the attorney said, it's about approximately ten days.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll weigh my options, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just as a point of clarification, it's not just this amount. It's the amount that we already have leaned on the property.
Prior.
Correct. So, that's, Mr. Campen?
It's about twelve thousand.
It would be in the neighborhood of two, two-hundred-twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, plus interest at the statutory rate, which is ten percent.
Gotcha, okay. Anybody else, uh, wishing to speak on this item?
Who to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion by Coops and a second by Sanchez. Without objection, that'll be the order. What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Just one quick question for staff, uh, for, for Tim specifically. Uh, uh, Tim, when, when we go through this process and, uh, there is a court order made, um, correct me if I'm mistaken, correct us if we're mistaken, but the property order is obviously notified by the, of the court's decision, correct?
Yes, um, as I have here, um, upon the, uh, screen. We notified Mr. Goldschay and his attorney, by the way. Um, he had a different attorney who requested the sixty-day extension to pay on the first lien, um, from the abatement done in April. And so, when we started sending notices out again of, uh, after that process beginning in, um, October and November and what you see here, we sent it not only to Mr. Goldschay, but we also sent it to his attorney, who reached out to us for that extension. Um, and we received, um, response from him in January. The attorney saying, I'm not representing him anymore. Please don't include me in these correspondence. And then, another attorney got involved, um, on behalf of Mr. Goldschay, who I've, uh, uh, our office has corresponded with. But I don't know if that answers your question.
That answers my question.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for the city of Bellflower to adopt Resolution twenty-five-dash-eighteen, a resolution to record a notice of special assessment for nuisance abatement for the property located at one-seven-zero-four-six Bellflower Boulevard, Bellflower, California, nine-zero-seven-zero-six, APN seven-one-zero-nine-dash-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-two.
Second the motion.
Motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sunny Santaniz, second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santaniz?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay. Item fourteen, consent calendar. Do we have any recusals or conflicts?
I have a, a conflict on fourteen J. On fourteen I, it's not a direct conflict, but I would like to note that my employer is the landlord for Kingdom Causes, but I have been told that I'm, it's not a conflict.
Okay. I have a conflict also on fourteen J due to property.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict from fourteen D. Street improvements, properties adjoining those streets.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, to pull item fourteen I.
I. Honey. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item, uh, fourteen C.
Let's see for Victor. Okay, let's pull item I. What item is that? You know who we need to talk to?
Mister Smith, fourteen I is the, um, the agreement with Good Soil Industries. Okay, can you give us a kind of a brief description?
Yeah, actually, I'm gonna ask Len to do this. And I believe Andrew's here as well, if you have specific questions for Casey. Len, can you give a quick description of what, uh, what this agreement's for and then Andrew can answer any specifics?
Um, yeah, um, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Um, so, this agreement is with, uh, Good Soils Industry. Um, this is for on-call landscape maintenance services. As the staff report indicates, uh, this is, one of the items that we were trying to quickly address is part of our strategic, uh, planning, visioning, uh, which is to just actually get more, uh, feet on the ground in terms of doing, uh, landscape maintenance items throughout the city. Uh, this could be anything from, uh, doing some of our, uh, smaller pocket park areas, uh, to beautifying our downtown, to, uh, really a- anything, uh, that we kinda come up with and stuff. So, I've worked closely with, uh, uh, Andrew, uh, from Good Soils. We've been trying to put this agreement together for a little while and, and thankfully, we've, we finally got it done. We have a, um, a lot of work and certainly can, can use, uh, his staff to help out. So, that, that would be the point of this on-call agreement here.
Yeah. All right. Thank you so much for your, uh, description. Um, I, I pulled this item mainly to kind of acknowledge that, um, I'm really, I'm really glad that the city is able to, to partner with Good Soil Industries because it's a, it's a wonderful organization. Uh, it's a wonderful mission and I'm glad that we're able to provide them with an opportunity, uh, for employment. Uh, keep in mind that the taxpayer dollars are coming from our residents, uh, for the most part. And I'm glad that we are able to give back to our community. Um, so, in the last, um, the last couple of months, we've been working on the budget. And one of the items that, um, we have talked about is the, the mow and blow contract. Is that something that, um, that they may be able to do? Um, or if not, if not now, at, at some point in time? Uh, because it seems like, um, this is kind of a, in the grand scheme of things, it's a, it's a relatively small contract compared to the big picture that we are talking about in terms of the mow and blow and other upkeep of the different parks.
Yeah, uh, correct. Um, A- Andrew and I, we, we, we've talked, um, briefly about, you know, the mow and blow. The, the mow and blow con- contract will be for a lot of our flagship parks. Uh, you know, we have a couple parks that are near twenty acres in size and it requires massive amounts of equipment, uh, to be put on out there. Um, I don't think that is anything that is currently in Good Soils' wheelhouse, um, my understanding. So, this really is, uh, separate, um, from what we, we would be doing, uh, with the mow and blow contract.
Okay. And as far as you know, do they have the, uh, the appropriate staffing at this point to do this level of work?
Yes, yeah. I've, they've, they've given every indication. And as soon, as soon as we're done with this, we'll probably talk in the next week and we'll start plotting out. I already have some, uh, projects that I wanna get, uh, going with him. He, as, as we've, we've discussed in the past, you know, we're, we're mandated by the state to somehow offload six thousand tons of organic material. And we, we did, we did Zen Park with, with our own staff. Um, and that took nearly almost a week and a half, uh, for us to do that. So, when you start looking at our bigger parks, you know, Riverview, you know, which is twenty acres in size, uh, certainly, we just, we, we need more people. So, I, I have plenty of work to, to keep them busy. Um, and then, there's a lot of small detail work too. Uh, you know, Library Gardens, uh, comes to mind quite a bit, um, right there at Belmont and Bellflower Boulevard in front of the Sheriff Stub Station. You know, we have, uh, that's our, our main thoroughfare for our downtown. Uh, it can definitely use a lot of attention and Andrew and his crew certainly have the capabilities to, um, get those looking top-notch for us.
Okay. Again, the bottom line is I'm really appreciative that we're able to, uh, provide employment to our local residents.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might add a couple of things for you. Number one, um, as part of your strategic planning process, you made pretty clear to us that you wanted us to work with local nonprofit organizations and partner with them to do the things that need to become in our, that need to happen in our community, um, including raising the standards of our public areas' maintenance. This is one way we can do that, number two. With the passage of your charter, one of the challenges we had in doing things with, uh, Kingdom Causes and with Good Soils was the requirements to pay prevailing wage for some of the certain types of work. That was one of the conversations surrounding your charter is in certain types of projects, it doesn't behoove the city to be paying those prevailing wages because it excludes certain contractors and certain, uh, types of work that we would otherwise be able to benefit our community. This is a perfect example of that. You'll notice in this agreement, there's specific language that allows you all, under the authority of your charter, to determine that this is a maintenance project and therefore not subject to prevailing wage, which thereby allows us to work with groups like Kingdom Causes and Good Soils. One of the benefits of your charter playing out, one of the benefits of your strategic plan playing out in one relatively small agreement, but hopefully, there are more to come, kinda like this.
Okay. I'm glad, uh, these stars really align well this time. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. And my two cents would be, uh, this is probably a great starting contract for them to see what they can gear up to. You know, it's, it's not a small contract, but it's not a big one. But it might be the right size to, to man up for people, personnel and more equipment and see if we can get them more later. Good starting point.
And even exemplary, um, for other types of contracts, Andrew and I have been kicking around some ideas of how to partner on cooperation with our Beast Team efforts. Presuming you all approve the budget, um, and our Beast Team starts to take shape, how can we bring Kingdom Causes into that and help us do some outreach to our unhoused individuals in the community? So, that's a, a forthcoming conversation as well that I'm sure you all will be involved in.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, Mr. Sanchez, item fourteen C you wanna pull?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on fourteen C, I just wanna highlight the contracts, uh, California Contract Cities Association, uh, seminar that was, uh, held on May fifteenth through the eighteenth, uh, that we attended. Um, four of us attended. Unfortunately, uh, Mayor Protem Sunny Santaniz wasn't able to make it. But just wanna highlight the, uh, the key, key takeaways of, uh, the association's efforts to promote, uh, local control, uh, especially, specifically with regards to, uh, land use and, and, uh, and making sure that we're, um, focused on our own cities and the efforts that we do to keep local control int- intact. Uh, and then, I just wanna highlight and congratulate our new president, Brenda Olmos, from our neighboring city of Paramount. Um, she was sworn in, um, as you all are aware, to president of the association. And so, looking forward to a year of her leadership. And, uh, with that, I wanted to, just make sure we report that out. And then, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull fourteen E, um, rather quickly.
Okay, you got it.
Fourteen E, uh, and I see that, you know, I wanna give Mr. Smith a chance to come up and, you know, he, he, he made his way out here, so I don't wanna leave him out there in the back.
No, he'd been okay, I'm sure.
I'm sure he would've. I, I only wanna highlight it, Ryder, come onto the podium, please. I just wanna highlight this, uh, 'cause again, kinda going towards the conversation and the comments made by Mayor Protem, uh, Sunny Santaniz, we had a strategic, uh, you know, strategic planning session the first time. And, and, uh, obviously, uh, Ryder and his team conducted that. And one of the things that came out of it was our efforts and communication with the community. And so, fourteen E is an example of us, uh, uh, breaching that gap and improving our communication. So, we just wanna say, uh, Ryder, we appreciate what you do for us and looking forward to this, uh, added services to the city. Uh, looking forward to working with you even more so than now. And I know you won't work specifically with me, but, you know, with our staff and so forth. So, thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's great.
It's great staff to work with. Uh, we got ten years of history working in the city and we look forward to continuing our work with you. It's a great story to tell and just happy to be a part of the team.
We're like a charter client, aren't we? One of your first-
You were one of our earliest clients. I appreciate that. I think when we first started with you, we had about eight people on the team at your puppy Smith, and now we have about seventy-three. So things change.
No, you've never let us down.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We try hard.
Your conscientiousness and your, your attention to detail. It's always magnificent. So we're looking forward to, uh, having more good conversations on improving our city.
Thank you. Well, we, I never believe we will make mistakes, but I promise you, we care and we will always make it right.
Thanks for waiting us out.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor for the consent calendar in a second, uh, with, uh, recusals of, uh, Morris and Dutton on item J and Coops on D is recused. So without objection, that'll be the order. Councilmember reports, Ms. Morris.
Um, I don't have anything.
Oh, okay. Mr. Sanchez?
Already made mine. Thank you.
Yeah. You got a twofer there. Mayor Protam Sunny Santinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a shout out to, um, Public Works and Economic Development. Uh, if you notice, the, uh, the new directional sign on the corner of northeast corner of Bellflower Boulevard and, uh, Belmont Street directing people to the Town Center Plaza is now very visible compared to the old signage. So shout out again to those two departments for making it happen. Now it's very visible, even during daytime. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Coops, you got anything to, to wish?
Angel of death that I sometimes end here. I'm gonna ask to, uh, memorialize this meeting in honor of a couple of friends of mine. I'm gonna start with, uh, Barbara Jane Reinstra. Barbara was born in September fourth, nineteen forty-one, passed away on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Barbara's known for her encouraging spirit and quiet strength. She was faithfully served as a nurse at Artesia Christian Home for thirty-one years, touching countless lives with her compassion and her education. Barbara prior to, prioritized her time and energy around her family and faith. She was delighted with simple joys like Bible study, gardening, daily walks, and traveling with Roland, her husband, after retirement. She took great pleasure in supporting her children and her grandchildren and their activities, always cheering them on. Barbara served on the Coffee Break Ministry at Bell One Christian Reformed Church for over thirty years, impacting many with her gentle leadership and steadfast heart. Now, to couple with that, keep in mind, she passed away on March twenty-eighth. Her husband Roland died April tenth, twelve days later. So I've got a husband and wife memorial here. Roland Reinstra was born on December twenty-fifth, nineteen forty, Christmas Day. Passed away April's tenth, two thousand twenty-five, surrounded by his children. Roland's last days were marked by strength and grace as he faced complications from spinal surgery along with heart and lung conditions. His heart was carried the deep sorrow of losing his wife just two weeks before. Married for nearly sixty-three years, Roland and Barbara shared a life grounded in faith, family, and quiet perseverance. From their first date on Signet Hill to their walks and bike rides through Bellflower, their love was woven into a simple, meaningful moments they shared. Many of us know Roland as, uh, an employee of the Bellflower Post Office, worked there for over thirty-seven years. He retired when he was fifty-five years old. He also had several side jobs, enjoyed staying active, biking around town with, walking with Barbara. A man of deep faith, he attended church each Sunday and Bible study every Tuesday at Calvary Chapel in Downey. He lived generously and faithfully, supported his missions in serving others with humanity and joy. So Barbara and Roland are survived by the children, Rhonda Beckwith, Rachel Vuhasen, Ryan Reinstra, and Roland Reinstra, and his sister Karen Sebusma, eight grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren. And Lula Flowers donations may be made to Artesia Christian Home. Uh, both Barbara and Roland, I could always know that I would see them on July fourth because they lived right around the corner from the LDS Church over on Carpentero where they always have Fourth of July services and commemoration of, uh, our Independence Day. And they were always, be there rigorously. They were good people. They made Bellflower better. They, they, big hearts, gave all the time, lived in the same house over on Felsen Street for over fifty years. Just went about their business to make their lives meaningful, at the same time making others meaningful.